We'll go to the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll turn it to Scott. Can you hear me? Good evening. I'd like to open the May 26, 2020 Harwich Board of Selectmen's meeting. And I would open it with a Pledge of Allegiance. Scott, I'll turn it to you to give us official directions through the meeting.
Thank you, ladies. Good evening. This is the virtual Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 26. I guess we're half virtual and half live. A new meeting for us tonight. At this time, all participants will be muted and the meeting will be closed shortly to new attendees. As indicated on tonight's agenda and currently on Channel 18, we're inviting people for public comment. To get in line to speak, you must send an email to comment@town.harwich MA.us. At the time of public comment, those emails will be taken in the order they were received. Those emails may be sent at any time. We're going to start our recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
Mr. Valentine, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Scott. Let me just comment first that I've moved my mask down a little because over my nose is fogging up my glasses. I will, Jamie, who's running Channel 18, to raise her hand or something if we're... You can't hear us? Because with a mask on, it could be more difficult. I know, I'm trying to speak loudly and I'm sure we all will, but we'll have a double check and we'll repeat if I see Jamie's a hand in the air. If she starts yelling at us, then we're going to be in big trouble. We'll go next into the weekly briefing. And Joe, I'll turn it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get into briefing, I have some good news. But before I get to the good news, I see our Public Health Director. Guidance from our Health Director is, as you are here as the board this evening, we've got social distancing, we have ventilation in the room. So as the members wish to speak, you can take your mask down to speak and then replace it when you're done speaking. But I'm going to ask Carly Jones if she could put her microphone on. You can see her there on our screen. As you all know, Carly works in our Assessing Office as the Assistant Assessor. And Carly is here this evening because we want to say congratulations and a job well done to Carly. She was a participant in the 2019-2020 Suffolk University Certificate for Leadership and Municipal Government. So Carly, I don't know if I was anywhere near close to the name of the program, but if you could just tell the board what you endured and if you'd like to talk about the ceremony that I was fortunate to peek in on Friday afternoon. But we want to say thank you, excuse me, we want to say congratulations, Carly. And the floor is yours.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. It was an amazing opportunity to be in that program. I learned so much and was able to network with so many people who have become friends and will be lifelong colleagues. We had a great class in the beginning, typology, who went on and on about how history repeats itself and how you've got to look back to see forward. And now with this pandemic, all of that that I learned is all coming into play. So it was absolute perfect timing as well.
Larry, I didn't know.
Well, we all add our congratulations. I can remember when I was young enough to learn new things as well. So that's... And I appreciate that you went for the... You know, it's great that you go through the extra effort because...
I love learning. Thank you.
Personally, but also it's great. It helped our town too. So congratulations for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
So Carly, you have the right to drop off if you'd like. You don't have to stick around for the whole meeting. Certainly, the choice is yours.
Well, thank you, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity.
You bet.
So, Mr. Chairman, picking up and you'll know... For us here, live in studio, so to speak, there is a lag between what you're hearing on the computer and what's being presented here and seen on TV. So it's one of those things that we'll have to muster through as we do this hybrid meeting. At this point, though, I'd like to turn it over. More on resumption plans and support of the community. So I'll turn it over to Megan at this point.
Thanks, Joe. We'll start with some numbers. The Commonwealth now has 93,693 positive cases since the beginning of COVID. Has Barnstable County has 1,280 cases. In Harwich, we are up to 118 cases since the beginning of March. Deaths, we have 6,473 deaths within the Commonwealth, 110 in Barnstable County. And Harwich accounts for 21 of those 110. We have, of the 118 cases, we have now 71 of those cases are associated with the Wingate residents. Some are staff, but most are residents. The remaining 47 cases, four have died, 31 have recovered. And the 12 remaining active cases are being followed by the Visiting Nurse Association, our contract nursing agency, and they are in isolation. We do have, four of those 12 cases are associated with some type of healthcare facility outside of Harwich or within Harwich. So there is a reason for those cases. The other eight cases, some are household contacts of previous cases that have now contracted the virus, but several are of unknown origin. We are continuing to push social distancing, hand washing, and monitoring your own health. And if you don't feel well, don't go out. It's very, very important as we start to venture back out into the population because it's now a safer at-home advisory rather than a stay-at-home advisory. More and more people are going out, more stores are open with lots and lots of restrictions and guidance. But it's vital for the public to take responsibility for themselves, not put it all on the business owners, and not go out if they are sick, if they have a cough, if they have a fever, if they are in a household who is... Household member who is also sick. It's very important not to expand your exposure to other people. I do have good news about the reopening Advisory Board that I had a call about today at 3:00. The restaurant guidance is coming probably by Friday. That's very, very good news. We've had, most of our phone calls are about restaurant guidance. What's it going to look like? What are we going to be able to do? And thankfully, the Advisory Board is putting out guidance prior to the June 8. They've floated that may or may not stand depending on how things look. So it's really good news that they understand the need for this guidance because we know that restaurants have taken a hard hit here, especially on Cape Cod. And they need to know what to do in order to open safely. We've had lots of questions and comments about the safety standards that have gone out. And I'm happy to answer questions through the board if there are any more questions on the safety standards that the state has put out for nonessential businesses as well as essential businesses to follow in order to open up, either have more people in or to operate safely. And then I think the rest of the updates are through reopening and when we can have that discussion when Joe gives more of his updates. But I'm happy to answer questions.
Megan, I have... I hear a lot of radio chatter the last couple of days about beach six feet versus 12 feet. And that's a mix-up on... You described this last week about, you know, 12 feet was for blankets. But could you reiterate that? Because it hasn't gotten through as far as I can tell.
Sure. Sure. So the beach guidance that was put out by the state indicates that 12 feet need to be between blankets on a beach. Blankets are beach towels. And it's a guidance, it's not a regulation, but having 12 feet between blanket parties, you could call it, or families, allows for some distance between, so someone can walk in between the two parties. Six feet is the distance you need in order to not have a mask on. Within six feet, you've got to put your mask on. So allowing 12 feet gives you a little bit more wiggle room to not have to put your mask on as you're walking down the beach. You don't need to stay 12 feet between beach towels within your own family. So if you go to the beach with your spouse and your three kids, all of you can have your towels right next to each other and not wear your masks. But if you join another family that's within six feet of you, your party is one big group. So anyone outside of your party would need to put their blankets down 12 feet away. So again, it's guidance, it's not a regulation, but it is guidance in order to promote social distancing as best we can. Does that help?
It does. Thank you. Other questions, comments for Megan? I guess we look forward, as everyone else does, for the restaurant guidance on Friday. And has there been, I guess to Joe or Megan, has there been an additional update on easing regulations for outdoor seating?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'll start with that. And I'm trying to get some documents ready that I can share with everybody. So first, you see in the packet that there's information, the memorandum that I had shared with you all that was sent to Community Development, and that was based on guidance from the board. And it really talks about trying to streamline our regulations, policies, and anything that we can do as a government in support of our business community. And it is great news to hear Megan say about the guidance because, of course, everyone's very anxious about the restaurants and all that. Prior to this news today, we received information last week that I'm going to put up on the screen here in just a moment. And this was through the Cape Cod Commission, and it's been very helpful. I want to show you the... There we go. The screen there, you can see. So that table of contents actually gets to all the topics that we've been discussing internally, most especially if you can see where it says flexible outdoor seating, reduced parking requirements to allow for outdoor eating and sales pickup, as well as street closures and things of that nature. So the teams have been working since last week to develop plans. And really, we're at the point now where we're just waiting on state guidance as far as service of alcohol outside the standard license premises, the... Any guidance from the state on closing of roads or portions of roads. And I think once we have that, we'll be able to roll out a plan. If we're getting guidance on Friday, we might be able to roll that out as quickly as June 1 by presenting to this board here at your meeting next Monday night.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments, questions for Joe or Megan? Don, you... No? Okay, we'll move on then. Thank you again, Megan, as always, and Joe as well.
Well, I'd ask Megan to stick around if she could. We're going to get into the beach resumption plan a little bit later on this evening. So sorry, Megan, but if you could stick around, that'd be great.
Did you cover also...
Not a problem. I'll be there.
Your next item was ongoing efforts on town. Was that covered pretty much in the restaurant discussion?
That was the memorandum that I presented to the board that's in your packet. It's additional information that I shared with you folks that we received from the Cape Cod Commission in support. The Commission's been fantastic in their documentation, and it really has helped us develop a template for something that we think we can turn around very quickly once we have the go-ahead from the state.
Let me suggest, if it's okay with folks, to ask Cindy to join our meeting next Monday to give her update of how things are going in town.
Absolutely.
From the Chamber of Commerce for those listening. Thank you. Then, next on the agenda is new business. Item A is to vote to approve Joe Powers, interim Town Minister, for another 90-day term. Don, you wish to act on this?
I move that, based on exigent circumstances, that we approve another 90-day appointment commencing...
Mark, who chairs the selection committee, and asked if he could join us on next Monday to give us just this preliminary, but number of applicants, what their tentative schedule is, so we're up to... They've got a lot of work going ahead, so... No more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is carried unanimously? Pardon?
I was waiting for you to poll us.
I know, I almost started. I'm so used to that. Move faster. Next on the agenda, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, in your packet, you received the letter that Elder Services sent to Carolyn Carey on the Memorandum of Understanding for the Harwich Community Center and the Nutrition Program of Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands. Obviously, quite timely in the sense that this has been a critical program during the pandemic in support of folks that are now even more restricted on being able to get out and about and get meals. The only item that I wanted to bring up for the board's discussion is Carolyn identified, and Bob Lott and I will be meeting with her tomorrow, just whether we need to add additional language that talks about either, you know, coordinating language about the pandemic. I think that's covered on the first page where it says that both parties are required to meet all requirements. And it says fire building and health. That would cover health for the pandemic. But we do have an ongoing issue with the generator at the community center. It's in the process of being replaced. So Carolyn wanted to just make sure if we needed language. So what I would ask is if the board wants to accept the Memorandum of Understanding, recognizing that any adds to language would only be relative to the generator or pandemic-specific language, or if you'd like to take any other action.
Can you clarify for me what the generator has to do with this? Is that to keep the building open for the elderly service?
Right, so if we don't have the generator, we lose the ability to use that building. Our backup has been Cape Cod Regional Vocational Tech School.
So it's here to build that in, to provide a backup if we get in trouble?
Correct, yep.
Okay, sorry. Is there any more questions? Entertaining a motion? Michael?
I move that we approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Harwich Community Center and the Nutrition Program of Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands with the understanding of the generator language that Joe mentioned.
Second. Any other discussion? Ed?
Joe, you mentioned the backup for us is Cape Cod Regional Tech. Is Regional Tech in any situation to be a backup right now?
Maggiore, we're looking for a new backup. Correct.
Good point. Okay, any other questions or discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Is carried unanimously? Joe, next on the agenda is, again, up to you, is to lead, is opposed town election warrant for June 30.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have in your packet a sample of the... A version of the town warrant. And I see that our town clerk is on the call, I believe, by telephone. I also want to just bring up for the board's information, additional ballot language that had been in there but has been removed in light of the potential for moving the town meeting. So I'm going to share a screen in a moment. These are additional questions that I wanted to make the board aware of. There we go. So the warrant that you have in your packet is the warrant being recommended for adoption this evening by the board. However, the original warrant had three ballot questions. The first you can see was placeholder, and it's regarding fire truck. And as we've talked many times before, the fire truck was in the capital plan, would have had a corresponding dead exclusion or override question. Given that we're going to be holding off on that quite likely for the fall, I would recommend that we not include that, but I wanted to make you aware of that. As you'll see in my memo later on about town meeting, we do have two dates, a new town meeting date for September, and we have a date that was identified if we needed to do these type of override questions in the fall. So we do have mechanisms in place, but I wanted the board to be aware of that. The second one is the standard road maintenance question. As you recall, this proposition two and a half was on the ballot in 2019. It did not prevail. It is a standard. We feel that we can hold off on that and do it as part of a special in October if that's where town meeting goes for that program. It would still give us time to get that done. But given where we are financially, it doesn't make sense necessarily to do that at the June 30, new date for the annual town election. And then the last question, Mr. Chairman, you may recall we had had discussions way back when about a wastewater water infrastructure investment, infrastructure fund, or known as the WIF. And we were looking at having that language be provided and voted on at the annual town election. However, again, given where we're at financially and where we're doing, what we're doing in the spring, it makes sense, I think, to hold off on this question as well. So what you have in your packet is what's recommended as the full warrant for the annual town election to be held on Tuesday, June 30, 2020. These three items have been held out. So if the board wishes to proceed with the materials in your packet, that's what I would suggest you make reference to in your motions.
Excuse me, Don, I have a question going forward, but you go first.
Yeah, I just want to clarify something because everybody's common understanding of the word "special" relating to town meetings. What, Joe, what you had said essentially was the meeting that we are going to hold on September 28 is actually the annual town meeting. It's not a special. And when you use the word "special," you were alluding to the special election that would be subsequent to that?
That would occur presumably on the next item on October 6.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for people that we're not going to hold a special town meeting right afterwards.
Okay, so I guess that answers my question because we'll still end up having a town meeting before the election. Because that confused me a little bit when I read this. It looked like we might be having the election before we have the ballot, before we have the town meeting.
Correct. Based on the next agenda, the board goes with that schedule, the next town event would be the annual town election on Tuesday, June 30. The annual town meeting is being proposed for the fall.
So just mechanically, how's that work? Have we... Because normally, we blow on things on town meeting first before it goes to the town. In other words, it could pass a ballot, but it's not effective unless it passes a town meeting vote?
Correct. So if it requires a proposition two and a half or dead exclusion as a corresponding action...
Both have to happen.
Correct. So they have to happen. So we'd have the mechanism in place in the fall, doing it differently. Meaning, as you've said, we usually do town meeting, then town election. This process, we would do town election for offices. We would do annual town meeting in September. And if we need to do dead exclusions and overrides, it would be a special town election in October.
I'll clarify that. We're not skipping a point here. Both items have to happen.
Correct.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the other point is, is that the charter language changes were based on a vote of last year's town meeting. So they'll be on with the election of office holders.
Correct. If you look at the warrant that is in the packet, the warrant that you have access to and what the general public sees, you would still have those questions going forward, as well as the non-binding question that the board had voted previously regarding Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station.
Other questions? So we need a motion then to move ahead on this, Joe?
Yes, what I... Sorry? What I would recommend is that the board vote to accept the warrant in the packet. And then if it's voted this evening, it asks that all the members sign the warrant this evening so our town clerk can begin the process tomorrow.
Anita, I think we've... You're on the... I can't see the screen from here exactly, but do you have any comments?
So Anita, would be star six on your phone.
Well, okay, we'll move ahead with the... I'll entertain a motion then, if... Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we accept the ballot warrant that's contained in the packet for the June 30, 2020 election and to sign that this evening.
Second.
Any other discussion? Ed, you look like you're about ready to... No? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Thank you all. Moving next to old business is, Joe, your proposal to postpone annual town meeting to September 28.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. And again... Caller's arriving for the call. This is... This is not an action that I recommend lightly. It is in no way, shape, or form the preferred action that I think that we should embark upon. But I think it's the best course of action in light of the pandemic and where we are with guidances that have been coming out and revenue projections that have been overwhelming by the virtue of the impact on what we have available. So my recommendation for discussion this evening is for the board to engage in the process of postponing the annual town meeting, which is presently scheduled for June 22, and instead convene that on September 28, 2020, which is a Monday. This is the date, if you may recall, when things were normal. We had that set aside as a potential town meeting related to wastewater. And that's why we also had that October 6 as a potential election for wastewater. So we had the dates in question. We know that these dates work for the town clerk and all the elections that she'll have going on. And we know that the moderator is available for that date as well. So if the board were to do that, it would then require us to engage in the process of the 1/12 budget. And again, you can see the information that's been provided by the Director of Accounts at the Division of Local Services. So quite a bit of activity. But again, not a recommendation I make lightly or with any happiness about it. But I do think it's the appropriate next step for the board to take.
Joe, can I ask you to, just for informational purposes, to read the key points on paragraph B of the document of... You know, what's included, what the plan should include and what it should not include?
Sure.
That's kind of the key to all this discussion.
Sure. You're referring, I would imagine, to the Division, the Director's memorandum?
Yep.
So item B says, "Develop a monthly expenditure plan." There's a reference to Section 5, and that was the special act that was adopted in response to the COVID-19 crisis. Section 5 from the Chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020. Section 5 requires that the Board of Selectmen approve an expenditure plan for the month of July for submission to the Director of Bureau of Accounts that provides sufficient expenditure authority necessary to achieve uninterrupted government operations and prudent fiscal restraint. The plan development and approval process will continue... The planned development and approval process will continue for each successive month while the emergency continues and prevents the adoption of a budget by the town, town meeting. The expenditure plan should include an expenditure estimate for operations in the general fund and enterprise funds. Estimates should consider that a reduction in estimated revenues may be required during the fiscal year 2021 tax rate setting process. The monthly expenditure plan should include amounts sufficient to cover regional school district pension or other similar assessments, and the monthly expenditure plan should include debt service payments. The monthly budget plan cannot include any activities which the town has reason to believe would not be supported by relevant actions, should not include increases in salary, call for and collective bargaining agreements that were not previously approved by town meeting. The plan should not include appropriations such as reserve premiums, overlay surplus, free cash stabilization, or other similar fund balances. The monthly plan should not include capital or other items that ordinarily require special purpose appropriation by town meeting, and the plan should not include estimated fiscal year 2020 COVID-19 emergency expenditure deficits or emergency expenditure deficits given authorization by the Director under General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31. And really, what that all gets to is, the understanding is, because of an extraordinary health event, we do not feel that it would be safe or prudent to conduct it in June, and therefore would not have the opportunity to approve an operating budget for the coming fiscal year, which will begin July 1st. State law mandates that municipalities have an operating budget, and if you don't, you have to go through this process of the 112th budget.
For that, Joe, I, those points you made, I think, was a meat to the agreement, so. Don Michael is asking for.
I'm texting.
Steve, okay, then, Don.
I just want to reconfirm. So we would do this each month, is that correct?
Correct. We would, you would first have to do it as early in June as we can for July, knowing that we would not meet in July. We would do one for August and September in anticipation of the town meeting in September. If for some reason the September town meeting couldn't occur, we continue to do that process. Every month until an operating budget is adopted by town meeting.
I mean, in that regard, I mean, obviously, like you indicated as well, I'd love to be able to have the town meeting, but I do think, you know, it does put a strong onus on the selectmen over the next several months to really keep a close eye on the budget, and each month it gives us the opportunity to do that. So if we aren't going to go in the direction of the town meeting now, I think it's probably a good methodology to use.
Okay, thank you. Michael?
I move that we postpone the annual town meeting from June 22, 2020 to September 28, 2020.
Point of order. I was perfectly happy with you making the other part of the motion, but we already voted the first part. We just need one motion to rescind the previous action before you can make a motion about doing anything else.
Okay.
If I may, if in the first paragraph of my memorandum, my recommendation is that the Board of Selectmen, the town moderator and the town clerk take all, any and all necessary steps to postpone the 2020 annual town meeting until Monday. So my understanding is what that would entail is the Board of Selectmen, the moderator, making the determination that the June 22nd will not occur because of the pandemic, and then the moderator will continue to carry that over month after month because of the pandemic.
Well, you already voted.
You already voted for the June 22nd, so there's no action that needs to be taken by the board tonight as far as canceling the meeting until that certain date. That will come later. It's more the action of preparing the process for the 112th budget.
Why wouldn't you rescind the vote and then open that up to a motion that Michael wants to make relating to everything else?
I don't, I don't know that the agenda item is written in such a way to do that. My intent for this was to get the board on the, on the same page of the 112th, and that on the June 1 meeting with the moderator present can take those actions.
I'll entertain a motion to move ahead on the 112th, because that gets the financial discussions going forward as we want it to. Michael, you want to do that?
No.
No? Okay.
Let Don do it. All I want to do is just rescind the motion and do everything else right after that. We had data, we had set a date.
What prevents us from doing that tonight, Joe, just rescind?
If I recall Council's guidance correctly, the, the meeting can be postponed for successive 30-day periods because the warrant hasn't been posted.
By the moderator.
By the moderator, right.
So that's not our action.
No, we can do it because it hasn't been posted yet.
But that's my point, is if we rescind this, we can set a date without the moderator throwing this forward.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, so.
Sounds reasonable.
Sounds reasonable, then. Why don't we just rescind this and then vote to extend?
Well, I'm saying, I'm not trying to create a controversy, just rescind the vote.
I'm okay with that. I'll also confirm that we're on the right track.
Okay.
Again, the major point of this discussion was committing to the 112th budget.
But that would be in the hands of the town moderator, and he's not in this discussion. I would just rescind the date entirely.
I'm comfortable doing that because we don't want to wait forever to take an action. Oh, Michael?
I move that we rescind a previous vote to have town meeting 6/22/2020.
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, passed, I'm aye. And then we can entertain a motion to, as recommended. Michael?
I move that we have our annual town meeting on September 28, 2020, and initiate 112th budget mechanism.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so I think we've taken the.
Yep.
After my.
Go for that.
Laying in wrongly, we've taken the correct action.
Larry?
Is that Don or Ed? Ed, sorry.
Just one question on the advisory, the LS advisory bulletin. I read the section B. The third bullet point is appropriations such as reserve premiums, overlay surplus, stabilization, or other similar fund balances. Can you explain what they're talking about there?
Could I explain what?
Can you explain what they're talking about as things that we should not include?
So my understanding that there, it's the concept of the 112th. If you take your operating budget, you divide by 12, and you exclude these things, you're in the ballpark of what they're looking for. But they don't want to get into the super majority votes, the stabilization, the overlay cash, the overlay fund cash, because that should be done by a full town meeting discussion and vote. So they're giving the board the authority to do the bare minimum that you need to do on a monthly basis until you can get into town meeting.
Yeah.
You okay with that, Ed?
I think it's something that bears looking at further, what they're exactly implying. You know, it's, going forward, given not knowing what our fund balance, you know, our revenues are going to be, trying to figure out what we have to spend, you know. I can see how some of, some of these, like stabilization requires a two-thirds vote to spend out of it, but free cash doesn't, you know. I'm trying to get at what their rationale is.
Okay. We'll, we'll track that. Moving on, we've voted, and that's been passed, so we'll move on to the next item then is the beach season operating plan.
So, Mr. Chairman, our beach, our recreation beach director was trying to get on. Eric, have you succeeded in getting on the call?
Yes, I'm here.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, this is Eric. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Eric. I know, I know there's going to be a lag in audio. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, what you have in the packet is material that Eric has put together really for two distinct timeframes. The first is what the town has an obligation to do based on the governor's guidance on phase one activities, which began yesterday, May 25th, and would go through the precursor to our regular beach season. Eric and I were able to participate in a call last week that was led by Senator Sear and Representative Peak with Secretary Theodides, who was responsible for Energy and Environmental Affairs, to really get into questions and answers on beach resumption. Just trying to find the document that they shared. So this is a document that you'll see in a moment that came through the Cape Cod Commission, the Cape Cod reopening advisory board, and the work of Senator Sear, Representative Peak, and Representative Whalen. So, wrong one, I apologize.
But the result, the list that you and Eric have put together is based on that document?
Correct. Eric, if, I don't know if you heard the question, it was the reopening plan that you have in your packet was influenced by the discussions we had last week and previously. As you know, Eric's been working on this since it was first mentioned to the board. And Eric, I'm not sure if you're in a position to see what's being presented on the screen, but it's the beach reopening guidelines that came to us by Energy and Environmental Affairs, and I believe it matches what the Cape Advisory Group was working on. In any event, Eric, if you can walk us through the plan that the board has in their packet.
Absolutely. Everybody can hear me right? Just making sure.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so we put together the plan based, based on the regulations and guidelines that were given. Just kind of walk you through the packet briefly. The, like Joe had said, preseason COVID monitoring with our COVID compliance personnel started yesterday. They're stationed at the 10 beaches listed. They're looking for social distancing. They're looking to make sure people aren't playing ball or any kind of games on the beach, which is prohibited. They're making sure people have masks in appropriate situations and that there's no groups of 10 or more. This is kind of a theme that will continue throughout the summer as well, with staff and patron interaction, as well as staff and staff with each other. We do have staff precautionary measures, including new things like one lifeguard in a stand at all times, coning off large areas around the stands to keep staff away from the public if they could. Everything's going to be cleaned multiple times a day. We're really going to hammer home that if they don't feel well, to let us know. Beach parking wise, our proposal is to have full beach parking at all beaches except for Earl Road and Pleasant Road. We're looking for roughly half parking there due to the small size of the beach. When those lots are full, the beach tends to be overcrowded. And because of those restrictions at those two beaches, we're proposing to sell day passes at Red River and Long Pond only this summer. Usually, it's Red River, Long Pond, Earl, and Pleasant, but with restricted parking at Earl and Pleasant, the parking spots that are there will be in higher demand. We also have a plan in place for our gate attendants to receive money from the public without hand-to-hand contact, and we're going to use a money box with a slot in it. It's going to be exact change only, and people could just put their money right in there without having to touch anything that the gate guard is touching and the gate not having to touch anything that was touching. Restaurant facilities will be open for the beach season and cleaned on a daily basis by the DPW. Trash pickup will continue. Our food vendors are, I've spoken to all our food vendors, and they're pretty much ready. They're securing their final permits with the Health Department and just checking to make sure that they're familiar with all the COVID guidelines. And other than that, we're going to really, we're going to get signage down at all the beaches, really promote what we're doing, get it out there as much as possible so people know when they go for it, what to expect, and what kind of guidelines they have to follow. And if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Eric, and I personally like the signs that you posted. They're very easy to understand. That, I think, Michael, you brought it up last week, and I've had some emails on this. Can you explain how you're connecting to the police if we do get unruly patrons? We hope that doesn't happen, but just make us feel better that that part is covered.
How, I'm sorry, a little bit there. How we're connecting what?
To the police, in case we have unruly patrons on the beach here in the parking lot. We hope that never happens, but.
Okay. Yep. I did, I had a conversation with the chief, Chief Gilmet, and we do have it in place, and it's very similar to what we do in a normal summer. If there's any issues on the beach that a lifeguard or gate attendant or parking officer has to deal with, they're, they're trained and orientation on how to deal with that. If the patron is pushing back, they usually call a supervisor, being my supervisor, or Sue Fraser, or one of our beach supervisors. If that doesn't solve the matter, then we do call the police. But like I said, we've, I've been in contact with the chief, and we have a good understanding of what to expect and kind of a process to follow in case that happens, and hopefully it doesn't.
Other questions, comments?
Larry, if I may, just on the, maybe to Joe, but just on the hiring of 13 to 15 COVID compliance personnel, I brought this up before, but can we just give an explanation of why we're doing this? And are they in addition to the gate attendants and, and mention that this is a reimbursable item?
So throughout a number of.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's right, Eric, I'll try, and then you can follow up when I speak incorrectly.
Okay, sounds good. Sure.
So what they're saying is, in the guidance documents, they're not looking to you, for you to use regular gate attendants and monitors and all that. They're looking for security personnel to make sure that people are socially distancing themselves and everything else. So when we went through the calls and we asked the questions, you know, we can use COVID compliance monitors from May 25th to June 26th because we're not in our normal beach season, did not budget for that activity whatsoever, and that is reimbursable. The question comes into, if we are still, we would now be phase two under the governor, if we have to have gate attendants, beach monitors, and COVID compliance monitors if we have to bear that cost. The hope is, as we get into our beach season, and we're in phase two, and we've seen more relaxing of the distances and all that, that we can rely upon our standard budgeted staff. So that would be gate attendants and beach monitors. Thank you.
Other questions? Comments? Don?
Yeah, I'm not sure that Eric was on the call when Megan was, so I just want to reiterate this. Again, the compliance monitors are not looking within a group that doesn't have a mask on, that happens to be a family that arrived there, if they're on the blanket together. The enforcement is interactions that are not authorized, or closer blankets or whatever.
Correct. And I'll just add to that and have Megan address. Eric and Megan work together on training materials for the COVID compliance officers. Megan, if you could just speak to what you and Eric had done for that last week?
Sure. I have, I've provided Eric with a PowerPoint presentation, it's like maybe eight slides, for the COVID compliance monitors about when a mask is required, when a mask isn't required, that if someone says they have a medical condition and can't wear a mask, that the compliance monitors aren't able to go forward and ask what the condition is, and that we are looking for a distance of 12 feet approximately. We're not going to, like I said before, pull out a tape measure to. We're not going to, like I said before, pull out a tape measure to see that everybody's apart. But the documents that I did provide to Eric for the monitors did describe, family units are not 12 feet apart. Families with, other families can stay within their own 12-foot block. So it was pretty explicit to the monitors on what to look for, and really the only things that are mandatory are the masks within, when you're within six feet of a person that's not within your family, and then social distancing. So the other stuff is guidelines, like we said, and if people are gathering with greater than 10 people, that is another thing that's a mandatory to bump up to a supervisor if people aren't able to disperse. So we did provide pretty explicit training materials to the monitors.
Megan. Don, is that...
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that because the conversations were detached from each other.
Joe, you've asked for a vote on this tonight. Is that necessary or just consensus with the plan?
So again, the board had asked earlier in the pandemic for information, so this was really just a report from staff as to what we've been working on and looking to do going forward. There's no actionable items necessarily because we're working on guidance from the state, so...
Is everyone comfortable with that, right?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on then to contracts. We have several, Joe, for you to go through.
So, well, the first item is something that came up in discussion with staff, and I put it out there for the board's consideration. As you know, we're working on the certification process, the CARES Act money that was delivered to the state and is available for municipalities. As you know, our allotment is upward, up to $1,669,000. The question arose as we're trying to procure and get into the process of getting those services that we need, I think first of sanitizing services at restrooms and all of that. The question came up on the contract amount. So I wanted to put in here a discussion point for the board if the board wants to authorize me as interim town administrator to execute contracts in excess of $25,000 if they were in response to COVID-19 reimbursable procurements and it was not possible to get it to the board in a timely fashion. So I'm not looking too much, and I'm willing to work under what we have presently, but I did want to put it out there as a management tool if we needed to in between the weekly meetings.
If I may, your intent would be to bring it to us unless there's a time crunch that this gives you an out if we get into...
Correct. It may not, but I don't want the town to lose out on reimbursable because we didn't have a chance to get to a board meeting to execute a contract.
Other questions? Comment, Michael?
I guess I'm just trying to figure out what, what would have to do if we didn't have a meet, we meet every week, so what, it would be so important on the COVID reimbursements? I guess that's one. And how sure are we, are we going to be to getting those reimbursements? I guess that's, that's the other thing. The way it was explained to me last week was, maybe, if we're following all the guidance and doing what we're doing, that they still have to vote to deem it appropriate, correct?
So, there's two things in play here. There's the CARES Act fund, which is the $1,69, which is in queue for us, once the staff and I have gone through everything, we're looking to tie back to that. So, we've talked about some of them related to golf and beach and everything else, things that weren't budgeted. The guidance that was, and I believe this is in your packets, did I do that?
Yeah.
So if you look at that very quickly, these are items that we should have a strong likelihood of reimbursement because it was CARES Act funding. The other part of it, and the more stringent part that Selena McCaskill's getting to, is FEMA reimbursements, which would be down the line. So for example, if you look at the second hollow bullet point, no, that's not the one, excuse me, let me find it. Down at the bottom, cleaning, cleaning and disinfection of public buildings. So municipal buildings, including fire stations, public housing, specialized cleaning equipment, air filtration, HVAC, and municipal buildings themselves have been restrooms. So we're actively trying to get, augment custodial staff to do the restrooms and any other places that need more than just cleaning, and it's more the disinfection. We don't have the capacity, and so we're trying to see if there are vendors through the state contract. So if we're able to do that, and it falls between a board meeting and when we have to put in, because there is a timeliness factor, I believe it's the middle of June where we have to do this, if it was $26,000, we could lose out on that reimbursement. We know it's reimbursable. We can't get to the board unless the board would rather do an emergency meeting. I just want to put out there to make sure we have all the tools to get all the money that we can and not be hamstrung by the process.
Now, Michael?
So just a follow-up. So whatever motion gets made on this should be specific to the CARES Act fund.
Absolutely, and any other restrictions the board wants to put in it as far as documentation or notice to the board in advance. I don't want the board to get into serial deliberation, obviously, but I also don't want to go rogue and wouldn't go rogue.
Michael?
Yeah, I think my concern is the same concern I've had about everything we've spoken about related to money. Reimbursable money is reimbursable money. Anything related to budget and us spending that we don't think we're going to get reimbursed for, I think this board needs to look at it.
Yep.
So if it's related to COVID-19, I'm fine with that. If it's related to the CARES Act funds and that it's vetted that you know we're going to get reimbursed, reimbursed for it. I don't want to get into a contract with a commercial cleaning company and then find out after you executed this contract that it's not reimbursable.
Understood.
Steve?
Two things. One, I would echo Michael's comment. I would agree, we need to be extremely careful about what we're going to get reimbursed for here. Secondly, a question on the cleaning of the restrooms. Is it a different schedule and a different cleaning than we would normally do? I mean...
So there's cleaning, and then there's disinfection. And cleaning is a regular process, disinfection is the next step up. The guidance that I've seen on restrooms and all of that is, and as you can imagine, the more activity you get, I believe we have to disinfect our public restrooms on a daily basis. So that's above and beyond normal custodial... Custodians on staff right now. We had a retirement, two illnesses. We are beyond shorthanded for custodial.
You should ask Link who cleaned the beach bathrooms last year. It's, I won't even say who it is, but it wasn't one of the janitors, it was somebody from the DPW. So, I don't know whether there's people that we could use to do that or not, but anyway, I'll just throw that out there.
I think Steve's general point is, let's use our in-house people to the extent, we've always talked about that, it was all possible. But Michael, you ready to make a restrictive motion?
Yep. I moved that we vote to authorize interim town administrator to execute contracts in excess of 25,000 in response to COVID-19 reimbursable procurement with the CARES Act funds.
Second. Second. Ed, did you have a comment or just to...
Yeah, something Michael sort of said in his comments or keyed off something, you know, we can, you know, if we have to disinfect for this period of time and it's reimbursable, that's fine to extract it out, but if we're, the expectation is if we're going to have to disinfect for longer than that, I would much rather see if we can spend some of the reimbursable funds, build capacity amongst our own people to do that because we'll be expected to carry that forward on our own dollar, and I'd hate to have us locked into continuing to take it out to the outside vendors when it's something we could pick up inside.
Joe and then Don.
So to that point, this is fiscal year 20, the $1,690 that's there now that we can use for expenditures, been incurred since March 16th of 2020 and we're not budgeted for. There's an expectation that there is a fiscal year 21, and we were told that we should assume our baseline funding for that is the $1,690 that we saw for fiscal year 20, because what they're trying to do is capture costs that's in March and go through, at least through the calendar year. So for this fiscal year and next fiscal year, we have a reasonable expectation of relying upon CARES Act funds for the disinfecting. If we're ever able to get back to normal and we can do cleaning, that's a different scenario altogether. Cleaning, I don't see why we couldn't rely upon staff, but disinfecting is a significant transaction based on CDC guidance and requirements, and we have to certify that we met it. So, so on those items, there's an expectation that there's CARES Act for fiscal year 21 would cover that.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To be clear...
If I may, last point.
Yeah.
I would not be executing any contract that had a term that exceeded December 31st because that's when the CARES Act funding is expected to stop. So these would be COVID-19 only through the end of the calendar year.
And to be clear, Mr. Chair, Michael's motion did not cover anything in the scenario that you're talking about. It only authorizes it if it's under the CARES Act and it's eligible for reimbursement, period.
Okay, Michael?
And just to clarify that, it's only because, I imagine, since the CARES Act is giving out this funds, there's going to be some scrutiny and they're going to look at it, and they're not going to allow us to build up anything.
Correct.
They're going to allow us to spend what we spend in response. And I think I would ask that we have the DPW director come up with a plan for after these funds on how we're going to, how we're going to go forward with that. And I know he did use somebody from the DPW that wasn't a janitor last year to clean all the bathrooms. That's the one comment, second comment, and it wasn't in the motion because I have a reasonable explanation that Joe is going to do everything he can to put these contracts before us on Monday nights, and if it happens to be a Thursday contract, we will then see it on Monday for an actual vote of the board and for us to at least look at the material.
Exactly.
And I would imagine that our finance director is going to have notes on these as well.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We pass some discussion. Take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ed, did you abstain or did you vote aye?
I voted yes.
Yes? Okay. Motion's passed. Joe will go, Ed?
That not saying, you know, I still think we ought to look at the possibility of, you know, if we're going to spend money on disinfecting, you know, you can spend that money on disinfecting by contracting it out, or you can spend that money on disinfecting by building capacity to be able to do it by the town. And, you know, I would much, if we can get it reimbursed, I'd much rather spend the reimbursable money to build the capacity internally so we can have that going forward without continuing to have contract out to outside vendors.
And this is all also based on conversations that Link and, Link, Sean Libby, and Megan and I have had about the standard of care that has to be applied and the reluctance of employees that may have done in the past to do it this year, quite honestly. There's a reticence to do that job.
Now, Michael?
And I get where Ed's going, and I agree, and building the capacity, for me, as long as it doesn't include new employees in the times that we're at, I would certainly support building the capacity by having the right machines, the right insurance, and the ability to do it after the fact.
Agreed, it's common sense to do so, I think. All right, it's been moved and passed, and we'll, next on your agenda?
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I know we have our golf director and superintendent of golf course on the phone, if they could unmute their phones. You see there the memorandum from Bob Lawton to me on the work that went through the bid award, the bid process and award of tree work at the golf course. It's been vetted by council, it's been approved as to... We don't have it. Roman, Sean, can you speak to this? I thought this would have been approved as to available funds, which is the standard procedure.
Well, Carol signed off on it, is it...
All right, because I don't have that in my copy.
So, Joe, I can speak to that. We had the meeting that you attended and Carol attended. The checklist that was submitted in the package was the early version of the checklist before we floated that packet down to our procurement team. Maybe it was my fault that I thought the procurement team after the meeting would get those signatures, but they were vetted and approved in the procurement meeting we had.
Roman or Sean, I know these funds, this is a typical expenditure for the golf course, and I know these funds were voted to be used for this by the annual town meeting last year. I imagine this year you're going to have less funds in that account. Has there been any thought to not spending the entire $35,000 since you're not going to collect, or can we even do that? I'm just thinking about, you know, the revenue loss projections and having some money available in an emergency over the winter or at the end of the season and you don't, or early next season and don't have the money.
Yes, I can address that. We have a, this is Roman, so we have a seven-year plan, and we're currently carrying a balance in the golf improvement fund, a little over $200,000. So we do have some reserves in that fund that have been dedicated to the future capital plan. We did, under essential spending guidelines, pull articles for this upcoming town meeting for further review, pending a financial review of the funds, because as you mentioned, we are expecting them to be less than anticipated.
Thank you, that answers my question.
Any other questions for Roman? He said Sean was on as well?
Yes, I am.
Thank you, Sean. You have to speak out here.
Yep.
Michael?
Yeah, I'm able to be a quiet guy.
I moved that we approve the bid award for tree work at the golf course for $4,998.
Second?
Second.
Okay, Steve, second. No further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one, so it's passed 5-0. Thank you, Roman and Sean.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, back to you, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So for this next item, I'm going to call upon our town engineer and other half of the dynamic duo of procurement, Griffin Rider, to walk us through the project, excuse me, through the materials. You and Bob have had with Liz Argo and others?
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Perfectly.
Great. Griffin Rider here. So, these, this pertains to the round four SEVAC solar contracts that the town engaged with Con Edison for, and this, the three projects included the public safety building, canopy in the front parking lot there, canopy on the south side of the community center, and then a as-of-right, or what they call an as-of-right site, basically an expansion of the solar field at the landfill, or the old, you know, the old landfill. And so that, the board has elected to enter into that contract going back six, eight months ago, somewhere thereabouts. And since then, Con Edison has not delivered on any of their deadlines. They've made some promises along the way that they would deliver, and they haven't done so. So, we've spoken with Liz Argo, and she's spoken with Leo Kakounas, and they believe that the best thing for the town to do would be, you know, we have every right to basically call them into default. We've also had some further discussions with the police and fire department, and they do not want to have solar, a solar canopy in their front parking lot. So this would, calling Con Edison into default would allow us to essentially cancel that project while for the other two projects, going with the second bidder. One of the benefits of going with the second bidder for the community center, and that second bidder was Green Skies, is the community center is also, I think there's a contract that will probably come before you within... that will probably come before you within the next few meetings for the north side of the community center and Green Skies was, has been awarded the north side. So we would have the same solar developer for both the north side and the south side thereby guaranteeing we're going to have the same product on both sides, just giving some symmetry of design for, for the community center. Basically, since, since the board entered into the contracts, we are asking for the board's vote to, basically start the default process with the board's vote and we can have Liz get that going. We were hesitant to do that without the board providing direction. There may be a future, you know, default or some sort of contract that the board has to sign, but we wanted to get the direction to allow Liz and her team to basically navigate this default process. And just for a point of reference, this, the town of Brewster was involved in this round of bidding as well and Con Edison was, was awarded their contract. The town of Brewster has, has called that, called them into default for, for their contract. So we have been in coordination with them, just, just understanding what other, what other towns are doing. I'm happy to answer any questions. I hope that answers some of them.
Any questions, Don or Michael? Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't want to be a geek about this, but I mean, in contracts, you don't use the word cancel if you're defaulting. I mean, you default and terminate. So my question is, has anybody sent out a cure notice, which normally precedes a termination? That you have X number of days to, you send it by certified letter or you have ten-day cure notice or whatever?
I wouldn't use those exact words. I will tell you that Liz has been in conversation with my counterpart in Brewster, staff here in Harwich since March fifteenth, when they've delivered notice to Con Edison that they had two months to rectify. That brought us to May fifteenth, they did not rectify. So now Liz is asking towns to, to clear them in default, to move to termination and all other requirements under the contract language.
Okay, I say that because you-
So I can't say specifically they use those words, but it's my understanding that they've been doing that process with due notice for the sixty-day period.
I, I say that because I want to preserve our rights. If you re-procure under default, if there's excess costs, you can go after them legally. If, if you just terminate a contract or canceling it, you can't. So, I mean, I'd be willing to support that, but I wouldn't be willing to support canceling the contract.
Okay.
Joe, if I may for the-
I believe-
We'd be looking for the board to direct staff to direct C-VAC that we consider Con Edison to be in default.
Okay. Michael?
Griffin, can you tell us how much more the second bidder was? What's this?
I don't have that information on me right now. I would have to go back and just evaluate that, but, but I can bring that before you in a future meeting.
It'd be nice for the board to know what the difference in price was. That's one. And then I guess-
Sure.
The second question is, this was a heavily talked about project. Why is it coming to light now that the police chief and fire chief, if that's what you said, do not want the solar arrays in there, canopies in there? Why, why after a default or a potential default are we changing courses?
To be honest, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I, from what I heard between conversations with Sean Libby and Chief Bill Matt, he wasn't fully aware of, of the project. I don't know how, how that came to fruition.
I'll just add that, you know, to potential twelve thousand dollar savings to the town of Harwich. So I guess I'd like to understand a little more as to why.
Part of my understanding, if I may on this, Mr. Chairman, is that the original design that they, is, is not what they changed it to so that what you were looking at was more of a benign canopy over the lower parking lot would have caused, I think, further overreach on the street level. So as they got into the design process, it changed the elements, is my understanding of that. But all of this predates present staff.
Yeah, can we get a follow-up, just a memo or somebody tell us exactly what it is?
Yep.
Fair enough. Don?
I'd be willing to make a motion if it preserves our rights in that area, Michael. That, I moved that the Board of Selectmen declare that we enter in default proceedings through the appropriate officials in anticipation of re-procuring and charging against the previous contractor.
I'll second that.
Second. Other discussion? Steve?
Just, I'm, I'm reading through this again, an award to contracts to the second bidder.
I want to keep them as a separate action because if we do default as a real default, you, you can move to that point, but I want to be able to make sure it's not on our dime.
No, no, I, I would agree with you.
It's procure, you charge back and to Michael's point, you get the police chief and the fire chief in here and explain why we would be foregoing that many thousands of dollars worth of electric cost savings, but that's a separate action.
I think, Joe, you're going to hopefully say that we can take two separate actions on this.
Correct. That the action this evening is first to declare Con Edison in default and that would give us more options. We could go with the second bidder, but that would still require materials coming back to the board for vetting and everything else. This is, this is merely that the town is instructing C-VAC that we believe that Con Edison is in default.
And take all appropriate actions to be able to declare them in default, terminate the contract and re-procure at a, at a separate motion and meeting against the, the excess caused by that.
Ed, did you have a comment? Question?
Well, question, so we'd vote on the default issue tonight, but not give any direction on beginning the re-procurement.
So, Griffin, I don't know if you heard that, but our understanding is if we declare Con Edison in default, then Griffin and Sean will work with Liz Argo and the C-VAC team to take the next steps to keep the projects that we want to keep on track. And that could include a future procurement contract with Green Skies. Griffin, did I capture that close?
Correct. We would, we would have to build, we would have to bring a new contract before the board for, you know, whoever that second bidder is, whether it's Green Skies or General Electric for the as-of-right site. So, yeah, yeah, I think that's, the, what's in the agenda is spelling out sort of the next steps, but we're really only looking for the board to provide direction on, on the default of the, of the contract right now.
Griffin?
And I believe, to speak to one, one other, I believe there, and, and I, I want to go back and double check, but I believe there's provision that in default, there's a hundred and ten percent provision of any, any expenditure that the town would have made to date with this current vendor. But I, I don't want to guarantee that, but we can ask, I will certainly ask Liz about that.
Okay, good. Ed?
Griffin, is, was there, in bringing this to the board, I'm sure you had conversations with the folks at C-VAC. Is there an expectation that tonight we give direction on beginning the, the re-award process?
I think that would be helpful, but we could discuss it in a future meeting. I think there's some, there's some legwork that needs to be done for the default before we sort of go that next step.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Don?
I agree with what Griffin just said in answer to you, Ed. In my experience, going years in this town, and I'm not really totally satisfied that C-VAC understands that that's our expectation. That's why the motion is the way it is. It's not, don't cancel the contract, actually take the steps that are necessary under law to terminate it and default it properly by notice, by such a date to cure it, and then the re-procure is a second thought.
Okay.
Because we have obligations. If we re-procure willy-nilly and it doesn't satisfy legally what they're supposed to do, then we can't charge back anybody anything.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Other discussion? If not, we have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Passed. Thank you, Joe, and thanks, everyone. Joe, we have the CDBG COVID-19 grant.
So I'm going to wave to Alice who already took herself off mute. Thank you for that. I'm going to turn it right over to Alice Boyd for her presentation.
Yes, fine, what?
But I do want the board to see on page two the, the motion that we would be looking for after this discussion. Alice, if you could just walk us through the materials, please?
I'll be glad to. Thank you very much. As many of you know, for the past thirty years, I've been writing community development block grants for the Lower Cape and many other towns in the Commonwealth. As a former Harwich resident, I want to make sure that you're getting, into getting an opportunity to participate in these funds. The COVID grant is, came out a few weeks ago. It is through CDBG. It's the first round of funding that's going to be coming available for municipalities to benefit low and moderate income residents. This funding is nineteen point six million statewide. It's three hundred and fifteen communities can apply for these funds, all non-entitlement communities. We, you know, have had a very strong track record over the thirty years and so we're very hopeful to some of these programs. There are only three eligible opportunities through CDBG at this point for COVID funds. One of the things that we noticed, that there's a strong need for, these Microsoft, sorry, micro enterprise and small business loans, you know, the businesses on the Cape have been just decimated with the, with COVID and Memorial Day was certainly a blow for many of them. We have the opportunity to provide up to ten thousand dollars to businesses as a forgivable loan to get them through some of this and those funds can be paid for payroll and for operating expenses. There is a ten, ten million dollars available for mortgage and rental assistance and that actually is going to now go to, some of that money will go to assistance corporation. They'll be dealing with the, those two opportunities for residents and they'll be reaching out to you, but we'd like you to participate in that and vote to participate in that as well. And finally, the, you know, we just, this, there is more money coming. There's twenty-six that's going to be coming to the Commonwealth for additional programs and I understand that we some money's coming to assist municipalities with lost revenues. I don't know how much or when we'll see that, but as soon as we see it, we'll let you know.
Are there questions, comments? As always, we appreciate your help very much. Nice to have the experience.
Glad to.
Could you just, could you walk us through how one of our local businesses would apply for these funds? That's one question. The second was, it said Turo was the, how, how many other communities are doing this?
All right, well, DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, has asked us to put in regional grants, not to go in with single-town grants. This, we're, they're really stretching their breadth bandwidth to do these extra grant rounds. And so they're regional. Turo has been the leader of the Lower Cape grant for the last eight years. Previously, it was well lead, before that was Eastham. And again, that grant's been going in now for thirty years. People can apply, small businesses can apply, once we have a sub-grantee. We're told we're not going to see these funds now until August first. We are out to bid currently through the town of Turo for an organization to run the loan program. Those bids are due on June fourth and we'll be hiring someone. I do know the Cape Community Development Partnership will be applying and there are other nonprofits that may apply as well. So that procurement goes through the town of Turo. As soon as they are ready, as soon as we can hire an organization, we'll be sending information to the town, posting websites and getting in touch with the chambers of commerce and the business community, announcing the availability of these grants. I anticipate we'll be accepting applications in early June, the initial applications. We still won't know how much money we'll have funded, but we will be able to get things started, get the applications in, so that as soon as the money is coming in, our goal is to get the funds out in six weeks to the businesses.
Michael?
As far as the housing assistance, there has not been a definitive allocation to Housing Assistance Corporation yet, but that should be happening soon and Housing Assistance Corporation will reach right out to the town.
Okay, thank you.
We also often work with local nonprofits, of course.
Thank you. One follow-up question. If we do not vote this tonight, our resident, our businesses can, and residents cannot apply for this. Is that what-
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ed?
Follow-up, what are the, what other towns are we involved in, in this joint regional group?
Yes, this grant is for the eight Lower Cape towns from Province Town down to Harwich and Brewster. So every other town has signed on to participate, you're the last. And we're, you know, we've worked with the eight towns very often and I think that you'll see that Harwich will get a significant amount of the funds that we secure, Harwich and, you know, Chatham and Orleans, and then really not much up until Province Town. So there's a benefit, a real benefit for Harwich residents.
Okay. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, Alice, how you doing?
I'm good, Don. How are you?
Great. I just have a question because there seems to be two moving parts here. I just want to be sure about what's going on. So the hack portion of this is the total of the rental assistance program? The money goes to them and then it gets allocated to local providers for rental assistance programs, say the housing authority or whatever, or is that, that a separate thing that they're going to be dealing with, not only just being the conduit, but actually performing the payouts?
Yeah, this is a new development after I sent out the memo to you folks. DHCD determined that it was best to go to the RAF organizations, which is Housing Assistance Corporation, and they will have the funds and they will make them available to individuals. They will market through nonprofits and local housing organizations, but they will deal directly with the families.
And that's the totality of the, of the rental assistance portion of the block grant?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct. Of course.
Of course. Other questions or I'll entertain the motion and it's, Ed?
I'd move that town of Harwich participate in the regional FY-19 CBD, CDBG, CV grant for small business and micro enterprise loans, along with the rental and mortgage subsidies program.
Second.
Any other discussion? And Ed, we will ask you to read that again, the CD-
CDPG.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Alice.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Joel, next is the dredging program grant.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you can see the memorandum that we have from the harbor master regarding the Barnstable County dredge contracts. This would be for Allen Harbor Channel dredge and Witchmere Harbor Channel dredge projects and recommending that the board approve the contracts and direct, I believe in this case it would be signed.
Questions, Michael?
I move that- Sorry, it should be the full board.
I move that we approve and authorize the chair to sign Commonwealth of Mass dredging program grant contracts for Allen Harbor and Witchmere Harbor, seventy-two thousand. Second.
President, we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, it's carried.
This is, this is John Rendon. Can you hear me?
We can, John.
Can I just make one comment if I can?
Please.
The amount that needs to be approved, I think it was inaccurately put as seventy-two thousand, the, the correct- And it also accounts for the offset of the thirty-six thousand in grant funds.
That, that was the amount in my motion. And I did see it in the paperwork.
That's what I thought.
I read it, but that is the amount that was in my motion.
John, I think we have the-
Okay, I thought I heard seventy-
No, you didn't.
I thought I heard seventy-two thousand.
John, you heard right, but thank you for correcting me.
Pay no attention to the man behind the curtain.
John, any, anything else you wish to comment on?
No, sir, that's it. I appreciate the support.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, before we proceed to open forum, we have the conservation administrator on to give the board an update on the piping clover.
Before we get there, Michael, did you have a follow-up?
Just wanted to make one comment. If we could, Joe, direct staff to not use the initials in- If we could, Joe, direct staff to not use the initials anymore and to write it out in the agendas. I know that there's some transition and certainly it's not a big deal, but it is AG's requirement to spell it out.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Amy, welcome to our meeting. You are going to report to us about the piping plovers, I assume.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody. Amy Sowsky, Conservation Administrator for the town. I just wanted to update the Selectmen as well as the people of the town on our piping plovers this year and kind of how it's going to impact beach activities and parking and things like that. So we have a couple of sets of plovers. At Red River Beach, we have plovers again at the east end, as we typically do every single year. They actually hatch today, and that's good news because if all goes well, then they will fledge or fly about a week prior to 4th of July. People, if you go, if people go to Red River Beach now, you notice that about 2/3 of the way down on Red River Beach in the parking lot, there are concrete barricades. Those have been there the past couple of years. We put those up when the birds hatch, and they will come down when the birds are capable of flight. So if people are concerned that, you know, it's, I've had some people ask me, is it due to COVID? No, it is a state requirement to protect their habitat, and the birds tend to use that parking lot a lot on the eastern end, so by law, we have to essentially block that off. The benefit is, though, is that 2/3 of the beach is still open and that prior to our busiest time, those barricades can go away. So just ask people to be patient and let the birds kind of do their thing. If a nest fails, the birds can potentially re-nest, which would cause foreclosures for more of the year. Bank Street has, moving on to Bank Street Beach, well, between pretty much C Street and Witchmere, we'll say, that's what we're going to call the Bank Street Beach area, we have three pairs of birds. We normally have two or three pairs of birds there. Witchmere has a nest, a property just east of the Woodstead, west, sorry, of the Woodstead Hotel has a nest, and we have one as well. These birds just have decided to lay eggs now, which means that they won't be due to hatch until just prior to the 4th of July. What this really means for Bank Street is just really increased monitoring. Typically, you know, we monitor, typically the nest hatches around the same time, and this year, they're about a month staggered. So it's going to take much more effort on behalf of myself and others who have volunteered to assist with the pullover monitoring per state guidelines in order to be able to continue beach raking activities through the summer. And I just wanted to say, I do thank everybody who's volunteered to help. My department, as well as other departments, have really seen the effects of what COVID is doing, and we all have reduced staffing levels and staff were dedicated to other places. So we still do need assistance with the monitoring in the mornings, so reaching out to people to help with that. But we've got a handle on it, and I just wanted to let the citizens of the town know what was going on.
Thank you, Amy. Great job. In some small way, it's comforting to know that life goes on even within the COVID-19 pandemic. We still have wildlife we need to concern ourselves with, so. Any questions or comments for?
Thank you, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks to you and all the staff and volunteers for getting this, making this happen.
Thank you.
I guess, Joe, we're ready for the dial in, is that?
Correct.
Scott was on earlier, so. Scott?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, we've got no one in the email list except for Mr. Tomlinson, who has already joined us on the line. So maybe if he speaks, I can offer anybody else, send me an email, let me know they want to speak, otherwise we can end it with Mr. Tomlinson.
Okay.
Can you repeat the email to get to that?
Thank you, folks. Ray Tomlinson here.
Excuse me, go ahead.
Struggling in dialing, man. Of the audio delay. I just wanted to chime in. I'm here on behalf of the Brackets and the Port and Ember Restaurants. They unfortunately did not have as busy of a weekend as had been hoped, and of course, I think that's pretty consistent across the board. The news that there may be updated guidance coming later this week for restaurants that have outdoor seating available or parking to be able to accommodate outdoor seating is very good news. I did exchange emails with Megan Eldridge, and she was very prompt and responsive and informative, and I appreciate that, and I think the town is doing a great job in trying to get out as much as possible with updated guidance, because, you know, as you can appreciate, the restaurant industry is both critical to Harwich, and Harwich is critical to the local purveyors. And so this updated guidance at the end of this week hopefully will be informative and ease some restrictions that will greatly benefit the restaurant industry as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Tomlinson. Any other? We'll take that up, I guess, weekly in how the businesses are taking place. Let me.
I think, you know, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Mr. Valentine, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
No, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you, sorry. One of the issues, obviously, you know, both the Port and Ember are large establishments and have large outdoor areas, and one of the questions that I posed to Ms. Eldridge was, how do restaurants accommodate, you know, patrons that gather while they wait for their food to be prepared? I mean, a lot of people prior, you know, prior to Memorial Day weekend were calling in their orders because they're predominantly local residents. However, as we start to see an increase in summer activity, people are walking up and therefore are waiting, you know, 35, 40, 45 minutes for their orders. You know, both restaurants are made to order, they're not fast food takeout restaurants. And so while my, while Ember and the Port are fortunate to have large outdoor spaces where people can safely gather and social distance, you know, one of the questions that we have is, are those patrons able to, they're not able to consume anything on the premises according to the current guidance? And obviously, we look forward to the updated guidance to see if that's going to change with respect to outdoor dining. But obviously, one of the areas that's a concern is how patrons wait and gather while they're waiting for their to-go food orders. And, you know, Megan was informative today on the email, but unfortunately, it's such a fluid environment that I think we're all waiting for guidance that unfortunately doesn't answer all of the questions.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may respond to that.
Joel, please.
The Board will have an opportunity to get into specifics for those establishments next week.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Donna suggested that I read the email address in case someone else will, I'll read this and then give folks a minute or two to a chance to participate if they wish. Again, the email address that Scott read off early is comment@town.harwich.mass.us. And we'll just pause for a moment to give, if anyone does wish to email in.
In the meantime, Mr. Chairman, there's documents for the Board to sign, and then, Mr. Chairman, there's documents for you along this.
Okay. Let me, while we're waiting for that, Joe, you have anything else for Town Ministers' report? And then I'll get to the segments report. Is that what you have to?
Well, just a question from Mr. Tomlinson's presentation. Apparently, there was a guidance document.
I don't believe it was over the weekend with Health Department. Well, I'll let the Health Director speak for herself.
And she's soothing up as we speak.
Okay. Guidance out over the weekend. I had sent guidance to all businesses, restaurants included, regarding the standard protocols that are required for businesses that are open currently that need to do the social distancing, the employee training. It's the standard operating procedures that the safety, standard safety procedures. It wasn't specific for outdoor dining. I had sent several emails out to all restaurants at the beginning of COVID and then in the middle of it to remind them of their, of the guy, of the regulations of curbside, takeout, delivery only, no onsite consumption of food or beverages.
Ed?
I just would ask if you could send that on to the Selectmen, because we tend to get drawn into these conversations, and it would be nice.
Sure.
Nice to have, to know what our town experts are saying before we get sort of side swiped so this week.
Sure, sure. And just to be clear, we don't have any local guidance, any local guidance or regulation. We're following the state's orders specifically. We don't have anything extra on top of that. So the communications I sent are links to those orders and guidance documents with just a few paragraphs of my interpretation of it, basically, but we don't have anything above and beyond what the Governor and the Department of Public Health have provided.
Okay.
Thank you, Megan. Joe?
And just to build off of that, excuse me, to build off of that, staff had sent five separate reminders to any of our section or restaurants for beer and wine service, the guidance from A B C C, and you can see the trail, and it's been shared before, but it started with the Governor's order to shut down restaurants for a period of time, then ramp it back up, and then allow takeout. So we've gotten that from A B C C. That's been delivered from staff directly down into licensed establishments, similar to what Megan was saying. There's no, nothing added to it, it was just, the town has received this from the A B C C, we're sending it out to you. So we have that available as well.
Okay. Ed, you sat in on that?
Yeah.
We're ready for the Selectmen's reports. Don?
Have nothing.
I have my T A report.
Oh, sorry.
My T A report was simply to remind the Board and the general public, there is a meeting on Wednesday, the 27th at 4:00 P. M. It is a go-to meeting only meeting, and that's Board of Selectmen meeting with Department Heads. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Joe. Don? That was short. Ed?
Oh, no, I'm fine.
Michael?
Nothing.
Steve?
I'm good.
I'm fine. Scott, can you take the last chance effort to email you?
No, sir, if I didn't, then thank you for the help with the email address there.
Entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.